We have issued, and we have issued an agenda for tonight. I'm gonna cut short the things that we normally say to start a meeting. And I'm gonna say, because there's still a possibility of a need for public access. Anyone can access a meeting by telephone and or Zoom or recording in the City of Norwalk YouTube channel. Instructions and links can be found at norwalkct.gov/meeting. The possibility exists that someone has a question about what we did last month, what we were intending to do today, but didn't. And what we may be doing next month, all pertaining to our normal business of the ZBA. If that's the case, please contact our staff person, Tammy Maldonado. And her email is t maldonado, I'll spell it here in a second, at norwalkctruntogether.gov. We're not going to invite the public to make comments tonight because the purpose is training for the board. But that doesn't stop you from asking questions via email. Maldonado, T Maldonado is T M A L D O N A D O. With that, I'm gonna jump to local. And we need to find out who's here. The chairman, myself, I am here. Secretary, I see Danielle waving. Our past chair, Lee Levy.
Here.
Waving. Keith Lyon is excused this evening. He had an urgent issue. And I will send him a note of condolences after we're off of here. We have a regular slot that is vacant at the moment. We had recommended someone. We have not heard back. Our alternate members, which are our alternate panel. We have a regular panel of five, and we have an alternate panel of three. Our Steve Ferguson and I see Steve.
Good evening.
And Ben Hanpeter, there's Ben. And Kathy Olson, I see as well. So there we are. We're only missing one and we're ready to go because I've already identified Tammy Maldonado, our staffers. So who's gonna take the lead for the law department?
So I'll do so to get us started. How are you? Good evening, Mr. Chairman and zoning board of appeals members. Actually, there's a trick you're going off here for one moment in the background.
Take your time.
For one moment. So my name is Mario Capola. I'm the Corporation Counsel for the city. I think I've had the opportunity to meet some of you, but not all of you. So nice to meet those of you I have not had a pleasure meeting yet. I have with me this evening from the law department Assistant Corporation Counsel Matt Sapienza, whom many of you may know. He generally handles our land use work for the city, as well as my law partner, Nick Bomante, who's in our law firm, Birch and Moses. So he will be participating this evening in the in the orientation. The last one we did was, I think, with all the land use boards and commissions together. It was done a long time ago, in person, actually. And ironically, I think what had happened was we had one scheduled around the time of COVID or a few around the time of COVID that got canceled. And it just took us a while to get back to doing these. So I'm glad we're kind of getting back to doing these orientations on a more regular basis. With that being said, I think that Matt was gonna get us started on, well, first of all, there's an outline that we provided all of you. Does everybody have an opportunity to to at least receive that?
Yes.
Great. So I think we were gonna try to put that on on the screen, just in case anybody else was participate, who was not a panelist, was planning to watch this orientation. Tammy, did you coordinate? Was Matt gonna coordinate with you getting that on?
I can share the screen. I'll do that now. Let me just a second.
I think you were in, alright, so you can put that up there.
So you've got the lead from this point forward until you're finished.
Thank you. And now, do I have the ability to manipulate on that or no?
No, you'll have to direct me.
You know, why don't we take it down for right now? That's fine.
Okay.
So I think Matt is gonna get started with us, but I'll wait till he till he jumps back on screen. I just want to make sure he's he's able to to get back on. Matt? Alright, he's off for a moment.
Sorry, Mark. I am getting back on now. And I'm happy to I'm able to share my screen. If that if that works, I could track through it. If if you'd still like it up there.
That's fine. Yeah, if you'd like to do that.
Just gonna pull it up. Okay. I think Mario, you're, I could do the first section. I think I understand was you're gonna do the first section.
I'll get started. That's fine. Thank you. So many of you, again, been on the ZBA for a long time. You're certainly well versed in in what your requirement is for the granting of a variance. That has to comply with the the variance would have to comply with town plan and conservation development. Very rarely do you do you even really get to that consideration in your in looking at or considering variance applications. Obviously, the requirement that's most important is the hardship requirement determining that, in fact, the variance being requested is is that the reason that there's a hardship for the variance being requested that affects the property uniquely and differently than others within the zoning district. And we'll get into a little bit further in the outline, in addition to the standard hardship requirement that you know, we've been, the generally ZBAs have been applying for a really long time in Connecticut. A further nuance to it with the the ENF associates case that came out some years ago. So with regard to to hardship, just a couple key things to keep in mind. Again, the hardship must be different than, the reason for the hardship must be different for how it affects the subject property versus others within the zoning district. Disappointment of use is not a hardship that would justify the granting of a of a variance. Additionally, a financial reason is not necessary, is not a genuine hardship. And we'll get into the Verillo case, I'm sorry, the ENF associates case later and talk a little bit about the financial aspect of your consideration. Disappointment of use, again, you're not able to build what you want to build is not reason for hardship. And then self-created hardships are not those that are justified as well. So somebody creates the reason why they have a hardship. That's that's not a that's not a justifiable hardship. And these are all things that over the years you've dealt with in from time to time denying variance applications. So it was back in 2015 that the court issued, it was the appellate court issued a decision in Verillo versus Branford ZBA. And for those of us in the land use and zoning world, it was a big deal. Because at that time, you know, everybody knew that 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 it was a genuinely high bar to win on a to prove that a variant, that there was a genuine hardship or variance in court. And the Verillo case really confirmed that for everybody with for a land use practitioners that it is a high bar to grant a variance and and the court really laid out and examined what that requirement is. And went into great detail in doing so. And it was sort of a wake-up call for practitioners. And for those who oppose a variance application, they're they reject, at the time, it was a case in which folks wanted to to be able to cite, to say, hey, it is a strict standard here for granting a hardship. This, the case that came later, which was by the Supreme Court, which was ENF Associates versus Fairfield ZBA, was the case that it did change actually the hardship requirement in Connecticut. And in that case, the court basically said that in addition to showing that in order to have a hardship, there has to be something unique to the to the reason that you're claiming is a hardship that affects the property differently than others in the zoning district. But in addition to, you have you have to, you have to prove that that you don't have a hardship unless the property doesn't have an economic value under the regulations without the hardship. Which is, again, another requirement that the court, the court essentially has added to the hard, the case law, the hardship requirement is set forth in the case law. One thing I would suggest to you is that when, you know, I think you should be aware of it, that there is this additional requirement that there, that again, if it went to court, that there'd be some sort of showing that without the hardship, there wouldn't be a reasonable economic use of the property. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't dwell on it too much in your, with regard to your review of of applications. Because I think if you do so, you know, it'll be, you'll be granting even less variances, which, and so again, I think it's, 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 it's a, it's case law to be, it's the law, it's important to be aware of it. But at the same time, I think that I think you want to take a reasonable approach with your consideration of Verillo and your and your consideration for for variances. And I wanted to just have Nick share a little bit of his perspective as well with regard to how we've advised some other zoning board of appeals with regard to the Verillo case. Nick?
Thanks, Mario. Good evening again, everyone. Again, Nicholas Bomante, I'm at work with Mario at Birch and Moses. So as Mario stated, the real only legal rationale for you as a board to grant one of your primary roles here in considering variances is if a hardship has been established. The Verillo case that's cited in the materials that we can provide a full copy of, it's quite a lengthy decision, but that gives a full recitation of really the history of the case law and how the courts have looked at it in every iteration. And then, as Mario stated, this case shortly after Verillo, ENF in 2015 comes out of our state Supreme Court, which really limits what a hardship means. And Mario started alluding to this, it's, there needs to be, really, you can't grant a variance unless there is zero economic value to the property unless you grant that variance. So if there is some use, if it is somehow a buildable lot, if there is an existing residence, if there is an existing commercial use that there is some value coming from, some assessment that's warranted on the property, we're sort of stuck here under Connecticut case law. The one exception to that that has developed over the years is comes from a case called Adolfson. And really, it's a, it's a limited exception here, but where there's an application in front of a ZBA for a variance that is effectively going to reduce an existing non-conformity with our regulations, not with the P O C D from a broader perspective with an actual provision of our regs. If the application can satisfy a reduction, that is always the goal of zoning, and the courts in Connecticut have found and upheld that, well, if you can't substantiate this really high bar that we've established for a hardship, the only way out in in terms of a ZBA to grant a variance is if there is an established reduction in a non-conformity. I caution my other boards in other towns that I represent, because again, this is a fairly limited remedy that we don't see too often. And oftentimes, a developer applicant may come in with a variance where there are competing reductions. And then it starts getting a little bit fuzzy. So, you know, I just say that is an option here as an alternative to that high hardship bar that has very much been established under our case law. But again, take it with a grain of salt, and that's what legal counsel is here for, if you anticipate that sort of an application.
And by the way, if you're following along in the outline, or really just for your future reference, with regard to the, the point that Nick was making about being able to grant a variance based on a reduction in non-conformity, that was set forth on the second page of the outline in section in section four. So it was, it was actually Roman numeral one, subsection A for variances. And then under variances, it was number four. It was that paragraph number four on the second page. And that just, you know, for future reference, gives you reference to in regard to to that one exception. Certainly, the Verillo case, and a strict read, a strict reading of the Verillo case would leave you with the conclusion that unless you could, unless they could prove that, or at least have a good argument, that but for granting the variance, there's little to no economic use of the property, you should not grant the variance. Is is definitely a strict interpretation of it. I think that a lot of ZBAs throughout the state probably take a more liberal interpretation of it. And grant variances where they feel they could justify that it's that the variant, that the buffer granting the variance, there wouldn't be a reasonable economic use of the property rather than no economic use. So I think that's a more liberal reading of it, that ZBAs do probably apply throughout the state. When you get, but I think it's important that you know that when you get to court, if somebody challenges the variance, it's gonna be pretty, pretty difficult to uphold the decision if the court finds that that if the, even if the hardship is granted, there's still a viable economic use of the property. There's a good chance that the variance will the variance approval, the appeal to variance approval will get sustained and the variance will go away.
Mario, could you send around a copy after the meeting of the Verillo and the ENF links to those cases? Because I actually would like to read them.
Sure, we could. And by the way, in the past, we've sent, we will, in the past, we've sent those to the because I've been with the city for a while now. So at the time those cases came out, we sent summaries of the cases and sent the cases off. It's been a while, but yes, we'll, we'll, we'll get those distributed to the ZBA.
Great, thank you.
But I would again caution you, you know, with regard to Verillo, it's really just reiterating what the law is, what the standards are for granting a hardship. ENF Associates is the case that really changed the law. And again, I would caution you in reading it that I think a strict interpretation of it would really significantly limit the ZBA, what the ZBA does with variance applications, but you should be aware of it. And certainly, if you have a, I think strategically, if you have a variance application which is contested by others, and you think it could turn into a court case, I think it would behoove you as a board to try to get some reasons on the record as to why you think this, you know, this hard, this variance is needed in order for the owner to have a viable, a viable economic use of the property. So I think in your deliberations, it's helpful to, you know, in a contentious case, one you think may end up on appeal, to be able to have something on the record, particularly, it's even more helpful if you do during your deliberation session to say, you know, and, you know, I think that there's a hardship here also because if we don't grant it, it will not have a viable economic use for, you know, X, Y, Z reason. And and certainly, I think in writing a brief on behalf of the board to uphold, to try to defend the decision, that would be a statement that 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 somebody in the law department would would certainly reference in in support of our case. Nick, do you agree strategically with, you know, trying to do it in those matters which you feel, you know, are contentious, more likely to end up in court?
Hundred percent. Yeah.
And as, and as Matt has pointed out, there's, there's, we've had over the last 10 years in Norwalk, very few cases, or very few court appeals of of our zoning court of appeals. So in general, you know, the the board does a good job and we don't get a lot of appeals. So one other exemption or exception to the hardship rule is the federal exemption. And it's in rare cases, but it's those in which you're granting a reasonable accommodation on the the Fair Housing Act or under the Americans with Disabilities Act. So for example, if you have somebody that has a disability, that disability is a hardship, it could be a genuine hardship that would justify the granting of a variance. So for example, I mean, the best example is probably somebody is in a wheelchair and they need a ramp in front of their house that violates some provision of the regulations, maybe a setback, whatever it may be. They have a genuine hardship based on their disability, and you should grant it for that reason. Where it gets a little bit tricky is, you know, I've seen some questionable requests for variances under the ADA where it's questionable whether there really is somebody with a disability. Most recently, there was a case we didn't get involved in, but we almost did, where it was like a fraternal organization. And they've been, for years, we're trying to get some renovations done. And they didn't comply with the zoning regulations. And at some point, they tried to get creative with making an ADA claim based on some of their members. But it was, it was pretty out there. So for the most part, I think those who make those requests for a variance under the ADA, they're genuine requests for people who have disabilities, and you should grant them. But from time to time, you'll get a creative lawyer that will probably try to take advantage of the of the law, and you should be cognizant of that as well. With regard to the Fair Housing Act, I do think that if you end up with a request for a project where they're requesting a variance based on a reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act, it would probably behoove you to, to contact the law department and get get legal advice from us on it. It is a legitimate reason for a hardship. But I've also seen some very aggressive lawyers make claims for a reasonable combination, accommodation under the FHA that maybe are not really justified. So my recommendation on those is is to always contact the law department and try to get some advice to take a look at what they're requesting and get and get some advice from legal counsel. Nick, did you want to add anything with regard to the FHA and ADA?
No, I think you captured it pretty well. It's still fairly rare in my experience, but yes, it is an option. If you have someone crafty that's trying to think outside the box, then yes, this is an avenue they can pursue. Again, I don't see it all that often, but especially in today's climate, we know housing is, you know, constantly evolving into a larger and larger issue, both in our state and national sphere. So yeah, something to keep in mind.
So the next section, which moves on to the end of page two and the beginning of page three is with regard to appeals of zoning of
Yeah, before you get there, would you discuss briefly practical difficulty as opposed to hardship?
You want to start, and I'll give my take on it as well?
I'm not sure for all intents and purposes here, we need to really draw a distinction. I think the bottom line that this board needs to keep in mind is if that you're if the reason that a board, this board may be inclined to grant a variance on the basis of a hardship finding, it comes back to putting reasons on the record why this board feels this is unique to this property and why there is still why otherwise there would be no economic value under this ENF case. That's what we're saying here. The rationale for this board to grant a variance, the only rationale legally is to find a hardship. And under the case law, as of 2015, this ENF case in particular that comes out of our Supreme Court, that again, I go back to is a very, very high bar in which this board would have to find that otherwise there is zero value to the property. So that's, that's why we say you know, that is this high standard. And the only exception to that, that at least has been established and reiterated within that Verillo case, which lays out all the history, is this exception where there's a reduction in a zoning non-conformity, an existing non-conformity. Mario?
Yeah, the no value piece of this, I think, is a little bit out there. Partly because it's very difficult to determine it. And secondly, because a substantial reduction in value would certainly hurt the property owner. And thirdly, because we've been treating the ability to get flood insurance as a reason to give variance under certain tight circumstances. But the way you explained it, we couldn't give anybody a variance for that reason.
Well, I think, I think to that, to that point, the majority, the vast majority of variances that get approved by ZBAs across the state of Connecticut would not uphold, would not be upheld in court. You know, I think the bottom line is that most variances that are given, if they were appealed, the appeal would be sustained. And the the variance would be overturned. And we've known that for a long time in Connecticut. In fact, you know, I, I was chairman of the Planning and Zoning Section of the Bar. Nick has also served as a leadership for the Connecticut Bar, so for the Planning and Zoning Section of the Bar. This is something that, I mean, I was P and Z section chair about 10 years, 10 years ago, I think. And back then, there was a significant effort that we made to work with various other organizations to try to come up with, to try to assist the legislature. We're coming up with a a solution to this problem. And in fact, the presiding judge at the time in the land use court, he didn't want to say it publicly, but off the record, you know, was encouraging us to do that and giving us his input as well, because he knew it was a real problem for the court. And for many, and so it's been for probably eight, 10 years, the Planning and Zoning Section of the Bar has been grappling with trying to come up with a recommendation that the the section could could agree with and that and advocate for to resolve this problem. And and we, the lawyers in that section haven't been able to get to that point for just about 10 years now.
So it would seem to me that to deny the ability to get flood insurance or fire insurance if you live next to a copse of trees is a problem that we would have to address in the code if we haven't addressed it already. And therefore not need a variance.
Well, but I think you could also say that, you know, if you don't get the insurance, then then you would have no economic value to the property if it gets wiped out and you didn't have insurance for it. So you could try to make that up. You, here's the thing, when, 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 when a border agency makes a decision, the, in order to overturn it, generally, the court's got to find there's, that there wasn't substantial evidence in the record to 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 support the decision being made. And so I think that if, and it's not the court's job to to substitute its what decision it would make with regard to It what what decision it would make with regard to to a certain fact that you looked at are considered. Um, so I think it's important that you put reasons on the record. Um, when you have a contentious application, one that can end up in court, uh, to support the decision that you made. Particularly to support your finding of hardship.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, so I say, so with with regard to the, you know, finding that there's an exceptional difficulty. Court, that's not really as important. What's really important is, why is this um. Uh, hardship unique to this property in comparison to others within the the zoning district? Why does it affect this property differently? And then also, um, why is there a, wh- wh- why does this, uh, why without getting the variance would the property not have a reasonable? Uh, or any economic value? And and so I think that's, that's our best advice tonight with regard to.
Yeah, I'm hung up on the won't have any economic value. I think.
That's, you know what, that's what the case says. And I've, I've given you a uh, I wouldn't call, that that's clearly what the case says. But I think I've, I've tried to give you a, um, and that's why Nick and I wanted to both kind of talk about it, kind of from different angles. Um, Nick, from a more, from just a reading of of it and what you should do based on what it says. And and my approach, which is an alternate approach to consider of, you know what the law is. And 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 to just uh, um. Consider at least having something on the record that addresses.
Yep, okay.
Value.
Given that it's such a high bar, how come we don't see more appeals?
You're gonna see an appeal if, if so, if um, well, first of all, if you deny somebody. Um, you may not see as many appeals because their lawyer is going to say, hey, they denied you. We don't.
I'm thinking more, I'm thinking more the other way.
We're not going to win on appeal. Well, I think it comes down to um, a couple of things. One, you have a seasoned, you have seasoned leadership on your ZBA. That kind of gets it. And, and so I think that this, this board has, you know, benefited from that. And so I think that um. The, the, the board, especially through having good leadership over the years, chairman has been able to navigate. The cases to to know where um. We're getaway with granting them, quite frankly, I thi- I think that that's, that's part of it. Um, the the other is you just haven't had as, I I guess you maybe hasn't haven't had as many neighbors. Fighting with neighbors and 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 wanting to appeal. Um, there's a lot more of those cases, quite frankly, in Greenwich and. Greenwich has a lot and 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 different parts of Fairfield County. There's just not as much of that going on in Norwalk. Nick, you ready to say something?
Uh, that's, yeah, I mean, I was just gonna chime in on neighborhood opposition. So we should feel lucky, um, if, you know, things are going smoothly and everyone feels that they've been notified and. There isn't reason to appear before this board and complain, um, then great. It sounds like we're doing things right.
With with regard, moving on, you can, and by the way, I keep asking questions as we're going on, um, so uh. Uh, with regard to um, another power, another uh, application that you do have before you from time to time, not that often though. Is an appeal of a um, uh, an enforcement officer's decision. Zoning officer's decision. Um, you don't get a lot of them, but when you do, it's what we call a de novo review. So you're. Um, you you're, you're, you're basically um, uh. It's without deference, um. Uh, to to what, to 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 the decision of a zoning enforcement officer or zoning official. Um, you're, you're looking at kind of on a, uh, with it, with, from a clean slate, um, from your perspective. And and so your review isn't skewed by anything else. It's, do you think the decision was right or wrong? Again, you don't have a lot of them. Um, I I I think that's fair to say, Andy, right? Over the years?
That's correct. We haven't had very many.
And so, you know, what's just important is that you show that you're a um, o- objective and unbiased body. Um, that is going to look at the facts and determine when the decision made by the zoning official or enforcement officer was correct or not. And that you're not gonna um, automatic, you you're not gonna find. Uh, favorably just because they happen to work in the department that you, that that provides staff to your, your board. Um, with regard to ZBA procedures, um, Nick, do you want to just talk a little bit about that?
Sure, I'm certainly happy to. I also want to give.
I think Matt was.
Yeah, an opportunity to chime in a little bit. I want to at least come back in a little bit later on. Um, bias predetermination and FOIA, um, so. If maybe, you know, Matt wants to run through some of these basics. Yeah, pretty straightforward folks, but um, still, like Mario just described for purposes of. When you receive a variance application, when you receive an appeal of ZEO action, there are. Um, statutory and regulatory procedures that need to be followed. So I think that's just what we want to touch on here. Matt?
Great, thanks Nick. Thanks Mario. So ZBA procedures uh, starts off with. Some of the basic fundamentals, which I, which I'm sure you're aware of, the quorum of members must be present to open a meeting. Um, in order, uh, well, usually many decisions can be established by quorum for a ZBA. There's a unique feature that for, you know, arguably some of your more uh, popular activities, you, uh, such as granting a variance or reversing a ZEO after appeal. You need a a concurring vote of four members. Um, so if you only have four members um, for the night, it sometimes suggested the. The applicant that that they should try when you have five members, uh, if you're going to make a decision. Um, but again, uh, four is the minimum for uh, the two functions of granting a variance. Um, or reversing a ZEO. Uh, when you do make a decision, uh, you should state those reasons uh, on the record. Um, as as best you can. And then uh, the variance has become effective when um, the uh. A filing is placed with the city clerk. Um, site visits are are also possible, that they're probably. Um, less common with ZBAs than uh, with uh, zoning commission, but uh, that that is. Uh, an option and uh, I'd say if if one is being considered for a specific application, you could always re- reach out to the law department. Um, to go over the specifics um, on how it would work for that application. Uh, a little more interesting, um. Pa- aspect of the procedures is the record. Um, this comes up in a, in a few different circumstances, but. All I, all written reports and comments received um, are obviously part of the record. Um, but uh, sometimes this comes up such as there's an issue with ex parte communications. Um, and there, there's a kind of few branch off issues that sometimes develop with the record and the eh, the the. Information after the close of the public hearing, you know, the, the, the baseline rule is that the applicant in the public should. Be privy to the documents and materials that you're using to rely and come to an opinion. Um, so that's why ex parte communications are are, one of the reasons ex parte communications are a problem. Is that that you're, you're, you're learning eh. Information that not everybody else is aware of. Um, so. Uh, wi- without getting too much into the nuances of ex parte communications, one way to. You know, and if they were to ever come up, again, you should reach out to the law department on that specific issue, but. But as a general matter, one way they they may be possibly rectified is if you were to relay at the next meeting what you learned. From the ex parte conversation. Again, you should obviously avoid them. And if someone, you know, were to come up to you, you should say, I'd be, I'd be interested to hear your thoughts, but please do it in a valid format at a duly noticed uh, meeting. Um, but if something did come up, you could uh, inform. Um, your uh, fellow board commissioners as well as the public at the next meeting, that might be one way to cure it, but it. If it gets to that, um, feel free to ask the law department's advice on that specific situation, but. Essentially, the record is important because uh, the, 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 the main concept for, for all these kind of offshoot issues is. If you're using something as part of your judgment. Then the applicant in the record should have it, should be able to know what that is. And then for purposes of the public hearing, they should have an opportunity to address it. Um, it doesn't mean you have to agree with them, but uh, they should have the opportunity to address it. And that's why there's a fundamental concept of the law with the record, which is just a, a, a fair public hearing. And that's part of that. Um, so anything that you'll be relying on, the applicant in the public uh, should have a chance to know what it is and should have a chance to, to uh. Again, address it. Um, addressing it goes to the next uh, topic, which is public hearing content, conduct. Um, eh, at most hearings, any person can be heard um, for for purposes of uh, public uh, hearing. Um, eh, eh, those are, those obviously must be recorded by a stenographer. Um, and these are the concepts of procedural due process and fundamental fairness, whi- which I applied. Um, you know, people can have an opportunity to speak. Um, uh, it's difficult to control the content of the speaker. Unfortunately, some people might go in offshoot directions. You can try the best. To to steer them in. Um, it's very difficult. I mean, it'd have to be extreme conduct to 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 really kind of cut them off, um. And if you have questions on specifics, again, feel free to ask us, but um, you, you can set neutral limitations to a degree, uh. Uh, i- if you need to, if there's a very, y- you know, um. Uh, hearing that was going to have a lot of input, maybe you could limit everybody to a certain a- a- a lot of timeline. Um, but for the most part, you have to be careful if you're going to start uh. Making rules based on the content of people's speech, that that's going to be a difficult um, aspect to uh.
Yeah, let me ask you a practical. Problem that we face, not infrequently. What? In the um. Touching that I have had of the law over the years. It is common in courts and I think in in hearings. That an attorney wants to cite a case. That attorney will either do so with a sentence or paragraph and or a brief. Typically, they don't bring hundreds and hundreds of pages of previous decisions and lay them out there and tell everybody they got to read them. Um, I insist that people give us a brief at a minimum. And if there's something special that they want to bring up in the decision, that's fine, but we're not going through hundreds of pages. Is that a problem?
Uh, the, I guess the material that they give you is there for your reading, uh, and and I guess there's no. For, no one's, obviously, there's no formal obligation that you read every word. I I mean, it's there for, you know, I guess it's at the applicant's detriment if they give a board more information than they can. Possibly handle. That's probably not a good strategy by an applicant. Um, uh, but uh, the, the material's there for you to reference a- and for you to read, um, and eh. Eh, it's up to them, obviously, to convey if they have a, 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 a case that they think supports their. Their case, eh, you know, it's up to them to explain it to you. Um, if you doubt their explanation, you can always feel free to ask the law department um, for their advice. Uh, the, the one caveat to not receiving. Um, uh. Information after public hearing i- is there is some exception for technical information, um, which usually law department opinions. Um, would fall under. So if you really needed to say, hey, I, they presented this case that that we have no choice but to to rule in this way. But I'm, I'm slightly skeptical of that. Um, I liked a lot of opinions, uh, opinions on this case. Uh, you know, we could obviously give you a more neutral view of it.
So do you think I'm on thin ice? If I insist they give us a brief, which I know they were taught to do in law school.
I I don't think, I don't think, I I think you can make the request that you'd like a brief. Um, I would just, I would do two things. One, if somebody gives you cases, as Matt suggested, um. You know, it's, they're not, it's not good advocacy if they say, they mentioned some cases and then just hand you a bunch of cases. That's not good advocacy because you have no obligation to read necessarily, you know. To read lengthy cases before making a decision. Um, I'd be careful not to say I won't accept it. Because you don't want to leave, gi- give, give them an appealable issue that you improperly rejected, you know, something in receipt, to receive something in the record. Um, with regard to briefs, I've had over the years, um. Uh, commissions asked for that. Uh, there was a complicated issue uh, involving a sewer extension. Um, pertaining to an affordable housing application in Greenwich and the commission chair asked the parties to submit. Each to submit a, a, a five-page brief. Um, uh, at the net, uh, you know, two, two days prior to the next meeting. Um, and it made sense because uh, it was a really complicated issue at the time, but um. My my suggestion is, uh, you, you know, that you maybe not necessarily require it, but say, you know, uh, counselor, it would be, I think. Very helpful to us if you provided a brief on this issue. And uh, before we make our decision, if you could submit that. Um, and I think it's also helpful, by the way, if somebody's going to submit something that you keep the public hearing open so that you have an opportunity to ask questions about it. What I want to do is have somebody. Um, si- you mean, submit some, well, first of all, if you did it that way and they didn't have it on them, they'd have to submit it. And you'd have to keep the public hearing open anyways to get it because you can't receive. You can't receive anything after the record is closed.
I think, I think we could accommodate that. I think the thing I can't accommodate is if they start quizzing us. You know, we gave you eighty pages, didn't you see on page sixty-two that?
No one has a right, no one has a right to quiz you. No one has a right to ask, they don't have a right to, to cross-examine members of the zoning board.
They, they, they could ask you rhetorical questions, Andy. Did, did you see this? But, but you know, there's no obligation for you to respond and nor, nor is that appropriate. Most of their presentation i- is a presentation unless you have questions. Um, so, so they may say. On page seven, and again, in, in, I second Mario's point, you can suggest briefs, but I would never deny an application if someone didn't give you a brief. I would still do your best to, to decide the case um, on the merits of the, the underpinnings of the law that that's.
Let me hit the last item and then I'm done. Uh, the last item is, we have a lot of lawyers in the family, most of them work for the State Department, so I think that might disqualify them. But they've suggested to me that we do not need attorneys telling us, you, this is what the law is. And if you don't do this, um, you're violating the law. Uh, I, they explained to me that that's just totally inappropriate and we shouldn't allow it. And do you agree with that or what?
I think it's inappropriate. I, I don't know of, of, while you, whether you can't allow it, I don't know if that's technically, I mean, i- it's inappropriate and it's not a good. Application strategy. So I think it's, it would be a turnoff and I, and I don't think you have to, as board members, agree with it. And and if you have a question about whether you have to do something by the law, the people that you should ask is their law department. So some people may say that. And it's, the, I don't think you could forbid it, because again, you can't control what they say, but it's sure not a smart application strategy by them.
I caution them not to te- try to be our attorney and that if we have questions, we will go to our law department.
However, I, I think that, you know, a good advocate will say, for example, if somebody's opposing an application. Um, you know, um, Mr. Chairman and Board, you know, we did provide a, a letter, you know, prior to this hearing. In which we um, provided what our opposition was, particularly, you know, there is no hardship here. Um, for a few reasons. First of all, the hardship they request, you know, the, the hardship requirements is that you, eh, the, the. Hardship has to be unique to the property and and differ in, in, in the way it affects the property in comparison to other properties within the zoning district. And that's not the case here and here's why. And furthermore, your honor, I mean furthermore, Mr. Chairman and Board, um, uh, you know, you have the Verillo case. And 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 that um, requires a finding that there's not um, a economic use of the property before granting the variance. And certainly that's not the case here, because they already have a house or they already have a, 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 um. There's already a, a, a commercial building here that's being rented out. So, um. You know, I think in that context, a good advocate is going to make reference to the law. Um, if you're going to get a lawyer who is an advocate for uh, you know, a, a, an application where they're seeking a reasonable combination under the FHA. They're going to give you um, recitations to case law pertaining to requirements for the board to. Uh, grant variances uh, for a reasonable combination under the FHA. Um, so I, I think it's appropriate for lawyers to provide you with information, provide you with. Um, to provide you with analysis of cases to um, to help uh, them argue their. The advocate for their position, whether for or against an application. Um, which you don't, what I think it is inappropriate is when a lawyer goes beyond that point. And 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 acts in almost a threatening manner to the ZBA, you must do this.
We get a few of those.
And and I think that's where.
There luckily, we don't get that many, but sometimes we get people who.
It happens from time to. And I think that's, that's, if that's what you're alluding to, I think that's inappropriate. And and if what you were suggesting or what your family members were, were lawyers were suggesting that, you know. Just because a lawyer comes in and tells you, here's what you need to do and here's what the law says. Doesn't mean you should um, follow what they're saying. I, I agree with that as well.
Yeah, we've had instances, Mario, where Tammy immediately notices what they're explaining, what the zoning code is in, is incorrect. And then we have them insist that they are correct, and that the board must do X, Y, Z. And at that point, I say, you can give us your opinion. But you're not going to direct the board. We'll, our law department, if we have a question about this.
I think that's. I think that's an appropriate approach and you've been around long enough to have seen people try that, that act and it doesn't. Generally doesn't fly. Um. So, yeah, and I think.
There's a difference between passion, passionate argument and and then kind of almost threatening and.
And uh, Mr. Chairman, you might as well make a statement, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yeah, sure. Eh, eh, I like questions as opposed to statements, but.
Well, well, no, I have more, I have more of a statement, uh, not another question, um, because everything is pretty much clear to me. I just want to just take the moment to thank you. Uh, for the guidance, because these changes, I'm new to the board and it's good to have these informative meetings. We're able to see more clarity and forethought what could possibly happen so we could be prepared. When uh, when situations do arise. I know Andy has seen many of these, but for me, I'm happy to. When uh, when situations do arise, I know Andy has seen many of these, but for me, I'm happy to 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 be a part of this meeting, because it could be complex. And you have addressed many of them, and and I think it just gives me more confidence to to understand that there there are ways. To to handle um, offshoot comments and and concerns, so I really appreciate it, that's all.
Thank you.
I I don't wanna sound negative, just give me a minute, I don't wanna sound negative, cuz the things I'm bringing up are rare. Most of the cases are presented by attorneys who are polite, know what they're talking about, don't misstate the co- the law or the code. But occasionally, we get one.
But it happens from time to time, and I think it's, and and by the way, a lot of the things we're bringing up are things that happen very rarely. But we want you to be aware, and and that's the purpose of doing the training, and by the way, going forward, we'll be doing the training more regularly with all the boards and commissions.
So that's why I'm showing my appreciation, Mario, and Nick, listen, Matt.
One of the situations, fortunately, doesn't happen frequently, but especially in some of the more contentious issues. Uh, we get members of the public or invited to comment, and they try to dominate. Uh, the the dialogue between the public and the board. And insist on speaking three and four times during the public comment period. And it, I find it. An interruption to the flow of a meeting when these people just try to hammer home a point. Seemingly unable to do so in. A time, a reasonable time period, and then feel the need to comment constantly during the public participation. Uh, i- is there a more effective method in controllingness?
I'll give you just my take, I'd like to hear uh, the other attorneys have to say as well, but um. You know, the um, in fact, I was just, this is an issue of fundamental fairness uh, in 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 control of a meeting that was a. Um, at issue in a trial, actually, I had um, on on Monday all day. Um, you know, the 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 board has the right to control its meaning and to have appropriate rules to have uh, an effective meeting. Um, the key is to make sure that um, you're not being perceived as, or somebody could argue that you somehow deprived their due process. Or more importantly, that you, that the hearing process wasn't, was somehow fundamentally unfair to them. So generally, you have the applicant, um, and the applicant has an opportunity to start the presentation. And then to provide rebuttal at the end. Um, and you you'll generally, and and sometimes you'll have somebody who opposes that application, and sometimes they're represented by counsel, sometimes they're not. Um, and generally, the chairman will give them an opportunity to speak, um, and sometimes, when appropriate. The chairman may decide to give them an opportunity to provide rebuttal, um, but it should really just be limited to one time of rebuttal. They shouldn't be able to get, that person shouldn't be able to get up multiple times and and keep talking. So I I think that it comes down to um, uh, the job of the chairman to decide. Um, what's appropriate with regard to providing rebuttal, and that's what I would consider it, nobody should have the right to talk more than once, it's, but but they, but they. I- i- for an initial presentation, but I think that, um, you know, the right of rebuttal is is a. Is something that you should provide, certainly to the applicant, certainly to somebody who's opposed to the application. Beyond giving just one rebuttal is something that I would leave up to the discretion of the chairman, based on how the flow is, the flow is of the meeting.
Yeah, your your restrictions, uh, and the extent you limit them, you know, time, place, and manner, if everyone has one shot, obviously, the applicant gets rebuttal. Um, but but as long as you're not limiting them on content base and kind of, well, we're gonna give everybody o- one chance to speak uh, other than the applicant. Um, the only, and and not to get too far in the weeds, i- i- if in the weird sense, the applicant brings up an entirely new issue on his rebuttal. Or his or her rebuttal, maybe you could give people a point to address that, so rebuttal is supposed to be kind of a summation or addressing the issues that were. Originally presented, but if, uh, I I guess, and this doesn't happen often, but it's a rare offshoot. If if the applicant were to bring in a whole new, brand-new issue, and people say, well, I didn't, I I didn't talk about this because they didn't. Maybe you would give everyone an extra chance again on that new issue, um, and that would probably be the fairest way to conduct that hearing.
And that that's an excellent point, I've had that happen to me before, where I've been on the other side opposing something and. Counsel on their rebuttal takes some shots at us that were new. And I've gotten up and said, you know, excuse me, I I know, I I've already got, I've already had a chance to speak, but I just wanna. Briefly address some, something new that the uh, applicant's attorney has said that I I think needs to be addressed. So I, that that's an, that's a, that's an important distinction uh, to consider when deciding whether to allow for their rebuttal.
As far as procedure goes, I know the board would love, you know, a hard rule, everyone gets one chance, and then everyone in between, and then the applicant gets one rebuttal, and that's it, so. But again, the the real rule is a fundamental fairness, and and most of the time, it's gonna be the same thing, you know, the same general outline. There will be occasional offshoots, but again, your goal is a fundamental fairness, just make sure people get a chance to address. The the issues that you're issue uh, uh, making your decision on, that that's kind of the fundamental rule for procedure of a municipal board. And and I think that wraps up procedure mostly, Mario or Nick, unless you have any.
I think we were gonna uh, just quickly hit on um, uh, conflicts and then bias and predetermination, so. Uh, one area that I think is uh, in this presentation and all the presentations to the boards. And commissions that I find to be a a a more interesting topic is is conflict of interest, and and I would just caution you that. We could talk about conflicts and examples of conflicts for a long time. And um, and and it's already, you know, we've already, we've just hit an hour, so we don't have much left in the presentation. Um, and and what I I I wanna go over conflicts of interest quickly, feel free to ask questions during it if you have them. But I just caution you that it's it's an area where we could go on and on if we really wanted to. Um, I I I wanna just give you some basic rule of thumb on 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 conflicts of interest, so. Um, first of all, it's up to each board member to determine whether you have a conflict or not. I can't, you know, force you to recuse yourself if you have a conflict. Um, you, the board member has to make that decision, um, I certainly could advise you, um, I have, you know, reached out to um. Uh, those who've served on boards or commissions at the council to say, hey, by the way, you know, you may wanna consider that you may have a conflict here, but more often than not. Somebody would come to me and say, hey, I think I may have a conflict, what do you think? Um, again, ultimately, it's the decision of the public official, of the uh, ta- of the city official. Um, co- a- and when you do have a conflict or an appearance of conflict, you would recuse yourself. Um, so at the beginning of the hearing, you would step down and you would leave the room, or if it's virtually, you would, you would, you know, go off camera as a panelist. Um, sometimes people think, well, if I have a conflict, I'll just um, I I'll just listen, and maybe, I may even ask questions during the public hearing, but I'll just abstain during the voting. And that's not acceptable, because then you are participating, even if, even if you don't ask any questions and you're still on the board. And and you you're still a voting member when you decide to abstain, and that, so if you were gonna recuse yourself, if you feel you had a conflict or an appearance conflict, you gotta recuse yourself, you cannot just abstain. Um.
Mario, could you take a pause for a second? When I looked at the statute, it had degrees. For instance, if you knew something, cuz buddy ta- talked about it, then you go to the board and you tell them that. Uh, there's uh, where they didn't tell you, but maybe wanna abstain in the end, and you can then remove them for that meeting. And there's somebody who goes a lot further than that, and uh, works with somebody uh. To get a variance or not get a variance directly, but not with the board. And then they are removed from the board, I didn't know you could remove any from the buddy from the board, but that statute suggests that you can. Only in that extreme circumstance.
And and that's an extreme one, I mean, I wanna give you guys kind of the the general rule of thumb, and I think if you follow the general rule of thumb, you'll be good. Um, and so, uh, and it seems simple, but I've had over the years many a situations where. It's been a struggle to get people to just, you know, accept what the general rules are, and the general rules are, you know, whenever a conflict exist. When does a conflict exist? It it exists whenever, for some reason. You, the mem- the board member feel that you're, you're gonna, you're compelled to consider the application differently for. A certain applicant than you would for others, so somebody, if an applicant comes in and because of some personal or business relationship. You feel, y- you know that you would treat them differently, then that that is really, you know, you got a conflict then. Cuz you're you're treating them differently than everyone else, and that's not right. Um, what are the general reasons for conflict? It's usually personal or financial, um, you know, the clear conflicts, family members, uh. Um, in-laws, you know, even if you don't like them, uh, you know, business partners. Um, those who you've had, you have a a personal or business relationship. Um, and so, you know, wh- wh- what would that be? Well, you know, brother, sister, uh, husband, wife, brothers, sisters. Partners, um, ser- serious boyfriends, girlfriends, um. It, you know, father-in-law, mother-in-law, brother-in-law, sister-in-law, um, how about cousins? Generally, yes, probably cousins. Um, you know, I've had somebody ask, you know, by the way, there's somebody who apparently is before this body uh, with an application. I think they're like my third cousin removed, um, cuz I recognize the name, but I don't, I don't know the person. That's, you know, that you probably don't have a conflict, maybe an appearance of conflict, I think it's the same name, but you know, probably not if you don't even really know the person, so. You know, and to what extent, to what point does the relationship become a conflict? Again, family members a little easier. Um, but, you know, as far, how about friends? That's a tougher one, you know, a a lot of you know people. A a lot of people in the city, um, you know, uh, uh, you know, a lot of you are popular, you're well-known in the community, and so. Um, you shouldn't have to recuse yourself just cuz you know somebody who comes before you, whether it be an applicant or an advocate. Or a professional on behalf of that applicant. Um, however, um, there comes a point in time where your relationship with that person is too significant. That it does create a conflict. Um, one, you know, couple uh, suggested rules I've given the folks over the years, you know, um, is like the wedding rule, the birthday rule. If you were gonna get married, or like, your kid was gonna get married and you would invite the person, you'd probably have a conflict. Um, if you were gonna have a birthday party just with some close friends and family and you're gonna invite them, y- you may have, you probably have a conflict. If they came to your kid's birthday party, cuz their kid and your kid are in school together, but you barely know the person, probably not a conflict, but I think, I think you're getting the gist of it. Um, it's when the relationship is close enough that, you know, it would impair, the the ma- the way you would treat them is different than you would treat others. Um, you know, the prudent approach is to abstain if you're in doubt. Um, you know, one of my partner, Ira Bloom, has been uh, doing this uh, municipal work for for uh. Forty, fifty years, and it seems like now, um, he'll, he is, uh, one of his rules is if you have to think about it for more than a couple minutes, you should probably recuse yourself. Um, a- and and what's really important, an important point to make is that the law provides, and even our ethics code provides. You shouldn't recuse yourself just for a co- an actual conflict, but also for the appearance of conflict, because in in the rationale set forth in in the case law. Um, to to justify that rule, um, uh, is uh, is is that. As a matter of public policy, we wanna have trust in our public institutions, at least as much trust as we can today in twenty twenty-five. Um, and so, we wanna make sure the public knows that they're being treated fairly, um, and so. Uh, if there, even if there's not a conflict, just the appearance of, so, um, if there's someone who. Works in your company, that happens, that you know, works in your office, that happens to be before you, even if you're not close with the person. They work in the same companies, you you have a conflict, at least there's an appearance of conflict. Um, so you should recuse yourself not just for conflicts, but when somebody in the general public looks at the situation and says, well, that's, that's an appearance of co-. You know, it looks like a conflict to me. Um.
All right, oh, can I interject for a sec? When, I have a question, since we're talking about conflicts, is there. I probably should ask this before I join the board, but is there like insurance coverage for the ZBA members should any personal liability ever arise? Like, are we covered under the city's policy?
Um, you know, sometimes when people are on boards and commit, when people serve, uh, like a board of a nonprofit, they'll say, you know, am I covered by the O and E policy that you got, you know, for officers? Um, you know, with, the the, with regard to the city, um. I would say that uh, the the better way to resp- uh, uh, rather than looking at it from the insurance perspective is, you know, are are um, are we gonna indemn-? Are we going to um, provide a defense for you? Um, and potentially with the city indemnify you, well, you know, we are self-insured actually for the first million dollars. Um, uh, so whether you'd get coverage under our our policy for with Kirma beyond that is is another issue, but. Um, if you're working, if you're, if you're doing something within your official capacity and it's not reckless, uh, reckless behavior. Something that's, you know, absolutely reckless, careless, um, uh, then then, you know, presumably, the ci- you would be, uh. Um, the the city would provide a legal defense for you and would indemnify you, but but for example, let's say. Um, there was someone who, an applicant, and who you had a personal vendetta with, and you, um. Uh, somehow inspired to make sure that their uh, development. Um, did not get approval that for something that it should have, because you did a lot of, uh, uh. That you you somehow uh, um, influ- unduly influenced other members. It did so because you had some sort of personal or 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 biz- or or financial vendetta against the person. Um, under those circumstances, where your behavior is uh, wanton and reckless, uh, quite frankly, inappropriate. Um, you would, you would probably not be indemnified, and the city wouldn't provide you with a defense. But it, but when, but it were a a border commission member is, um, is simply just doing their job, and you have uh, somebody who sues you. Um, yes, the city will uh, will provide a defense and indemnify you, and trust me, I've been there before, because anybody who's read the newspapers knows, you know. I've been threatened before, uh, when people try to put pressure on us in litigation, so. Um, you know, anybody who read Nancy on Norwalk, you know, five, seven years ago knows I've I've certainly been the target. O- over time, and 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 I've always felt like, hey, I'm doing the right thing, um, I'm not doing anything inappropriate, and I'm not gonna have anybody. Put pressure on me, even if they're making phone calls to partners in my office and saying my firm's gonna get sued and. Making threats about my my family members, I'm not gonna let anybody influence me. I'm not gonna let anybody scare me into, you know, not doing my job and properly representing the city and giving me advice that I should. Um, so, you know, I've been there, um, and and I do have faith that, you know, the city will do the right thing and indemnify and. Provide a defense when it's appropriate.
Understood, thank you.
Um, bias and predetermination, Nick, and well, before I do that, any other questions on conflict? Move on. Great, I know you all get it, um, and by the way, last thing, which is one more thing on conflict for me. If any of you ever have a question, you could reach out to either me or Matt or anybody else in the law department confidentially. And and ask us our opinion, and we are more than happy to do, to provide it to you. Um, quite often, we've given people advice over the years for um, potential conflicts, and and one thing I have to say, there's a lot of. Folks, council members are really careful about it. Um, where it's even a close call, a problem, nine, most of the time, it's not a conflict, you're not even an appearance of conflict, but people do. Check with us, and we're always available to you at any time. Nick, bias predetermination?
Thanks, Mario. Okay, we'll try to bring this home, folks, uh, and the next two topics, at least for me, which brings us towards the end of our outline. Um, quickly, bias and predetermination, which flows pretty nicely from conflicts, and then. We have to talk about F O I, um, not too long, but I'll just hit a couple highlights. So, what happens if? Someone has a conflict and does not recuse themselves? Um, at least what could happen, or what happens if someone doesn't necessarily have a conflict? But starts blasting an applicant on Facebook. Or going to your local media outlet and giving remarks that really show your true colors before an application. Is actually in front of you, um, or that a public hearing has actually occurred. I I I say these examples sort of in jest, but not really, because they have all happened to me. In my experience in other towns, it's fairly rare, again. Um, you know, like much of what we're saying tonight, these are worst-case scenarios, but. That's w- part of what we're here for, to bring these potential issues to your attention. And it is not something that this board wants a court to decide. If there is an applicant. Who feels prejudiced by a decision, by a denial. Or let's say a neighbor who feels prejudiced by an approval. If um, there is some background, some basis, that one of the members. Who was a voting member, has their mind made up essentially already, um, that is a grounds. Independent of anything else for appeal to court. Um, typically, that gets hacked on um, to a handful of other claims. Um, but it is, uh. By and large, in and of itself, a grounds for a lawsuit against a decision, so. Let's just be very careful, bottom line, don't talk to the media on a topic that. Has some likelihood of coming before. Has some likelihood of coming before you in the near future. Um, don't start posting comments on Facebook or Instagram or wherever. Goes without saying, but, um, you know, we do have to say this from time to time.
It doesn't go without saying, y- y- you have to say it because it has happened over the years. Um, so luckily it hasn't happened much, but it's happened over the years, um. With different city agency, members of different city agencies, so it's important to always to remind everybody. And by the way, one other thing. Um, it's important to remind people too that you should be careful not to comment on social media on something that could potentially come before you. So it's obviously a big no-no when something is before you. But, and this probably pertains more to the planning, zoning commission. But when there's something that's potentially going to come before you. Um, I would also caution you or potentially could come before you. I would strong, I would tell you that you shouldn't, uh, make any comments on social media as well. Um, a- and also I would say, if you have, you know, husband, wife, a partner, you know. They should also be careful of comments they're making on social media pertaining to anything that could be before you, um, as well. Um, even though they're not on the border commission, they're still associated with you and I would. Um, caution and make sure, you know, I, my, my wife doesn't listen to me, so. Um, but you know, uh, just, just to caution you because that's, that's happened over the years as well.
Agreed. And then, just to take this home, um. That I think also flows into just a brief discussion about F O I. So we've all heard about F O I, we've talked about it. Um, really, what it means for our purposes is this is a Connecticut state law that does two things. It says we need to have our meetings open to the public. And then number two, any public records. That has meaning, some sort of communications, emails included. Um, pertaining to your official business is available to the public. There's a handful of limited exceptions to those disclosure requirements, but those are the two big buckets. What FOIA does here, we need to have our meetings open to the public, we need to have our records available to the public. Um. Meetings are uniquely defined. Under the Freedom of Information Act. And this is where folks get in trouble sometimes, not just ZBAs, but any. Um, entity that falls under the definition as you see in the outline here of public agency. So that's what the Freedom of Information Act calls boards such as yourself, um, public agencies. And where there is a public agency and where there's a communication. Amongst a quorum. So that's three. For this board. That constitutes a meeting. So I, I stress this because this is the issue we see, um. Time and time again. Wherever there's a claim of an illegal meeting, meeting, a meeting that has not been publicly noticed. It's, it, it essentially comes down to an email exchange amongst a handful of board members. Perhaps, um, innocuously. The law does allow Tammy, for example, to send out. Your agendas, to send out your notices, to email the board members to say, hey, can everyone make. Such and such, uh, potential special meeting time. That's okay. But where there is a back and forth exchange. Amongst members of this board and other public agencies. Whether it be by email, by text message, um, by phone, by video conference. That constitutes a meeting that under FOIA. We need to give the public notice of so that they can attend and participate if that's warranted. So really that's.
I just had one app, I would caution you that. Um, if you get an email maybe from staff about scheduling, I've seen sometimes happen where. It's an email that is appropriate to send to the full body, um, for purposes, for example, of scheduling. And then somebody brings up a substantive issue regarding something, a matter that should be only. Uh, dis- considered or discussed in, in an act- in a meeting of the body. And so something starts off, again, uh, innocently, um, for house keys, a housekeeping item that's appropriate. And then somebody, you know, comes in with a substantive comment and then there starts to be a back and forth. Um, that's inappropriate. So just beware of that as well, but I, I have seen that happen. It's probably less, you're gonna get less of those emails, I assume, for the ZBA because you're not doing site visits as much and. As much as P and Z, but, but you are doing site visits and certainly you are having, uh, your, your schedules change from time to time, so.
The rough, Mario, the rough rule of thumb that we follow. Is do not talk about, um, anything that we have in a hearing. Whether it's a variance or approval or repeal, um, except in the meeting itself.
I think that works.
It's worked really well. Um, I occasionally hear a leak and we, we try to close any leak that might appear.
I think those are the highlights, um, as far as FOIA is concerned. I mean, Mo- Mario just now touched on a site visit again. Um, technically, if similarly, if there's a quorum. And in the event, the rare event, it sounds like that this bor- board were to do a site visit, that would constitute a meeting. So Tammy would have to, um, make sure that gets noticed. Adequately and, um, site visits then present some concerns for us, meaning we don't want anyone talking. Because it's very difficult to track, um, for site visits. That's a little bit more nuanced, don't need to get into the weeds there, but. Um, really, those are the main concerns here. Watch out, um, in terms of emails. Because you can be creating an illegal meeting. And then it goes.
One, there's one exception to what I said. That exception is this. If a hearing has been held in close and then we've made a decision. And somebody new to the board says, would you explain it to me? Or past chairman and I went chairman, do explain. Some of the issues involved and sometimes it could have been two of them sitting there and I would have made the third. It's not a meeting, um, it's basically instruction about what had happened already.
I, I, the only thing I caution.
I would introduce to that, sometimes with these, when, when a decision is made. Sometimes it's good to leave it the way it is, to recount a decision. Could lead to something that could fester. So I would say if the decision's made, isn't it better to just leave it how it is, Andy? No.
No, I bet if you end up with a board member didn't understand it.
I see what you mean. Okay, the process, there, the processes there in.
Andy, I think that's fair to say, you know, if, if, if after something, the decision is made. You wanna clarify something for someone, um, hey, by the way, you know, Steve. Uh, just, you know, you kind of, you know, I want to explain to you why I made that comment. When you made a comment about whatever, I just want to tell you why I. You know, I, I, I said something to you on the record about it because I wanted to just make sure, you know, we were getting on the record. Um, a finding with regard to economic value because that's one of the things we have to do to, to, to find a hardship. And, um, and I, and you know, something like that.
Mario, with that, Mario, we don't do that. Andy and I, we don't do that. So this, use another example.
Well, it doesn't matter. It could be anybody. Uh, it just, I'm saying if, if, if somebody wants to clarify something with a member after a meeting. I think that's fine. I, I would again caution you not to have more than two people discussing it because once you have three, you hit a quorum. But I think is, Andy, as you pointed out, I think clarification for somebody, um, as to a discussion that was had, um, in a deliberation, I think is, is fine. Um, but again, uh, you know, you shouldn't be discuss, you know, obviously you don't want to be discussing, uh, as a, as a matter of, of regular business. Or, or, or process or procedure, um, substantive issues pertaining to applications. But I do think sometimes. You know, talking about with one member, how some, you know, h- how you handle something in deliberation session is helpful. Or some, or if you think something that somebody did was wrong, you want to, and chairman address it with them, hey, maybe next time, just be careful not to. Do A, B, or C. I think that, that, that could be appropriate. Nick?
Good.
Yeah, agreed. I mean, that's part of the chairman's role, quite frankly, I think in any of these boards. So some of those one-off conversations I think are inherent in, um, you know, effective government practice, so. Otherwise, that's it for me, Mario, in terms of, uh, our.
Well, they're just a training requirement. I think you were just gonna hit on that real quick.
Yeah, uh, we'll double check. Um, the law has evolved, um. Over the past several years and it seems through every section now. So I, I know there is, um. A handful of education requirements for you as board members. Um, we'll interface with Matt and get back to you guys. I checked again this section of the statutes earlier. I just want to make sure this is the effective version. Um, that applies to you folks, but point being, um, you should get credit for tonight, so. We will confirm that with you all.
Tonight was an hour and a half session. Um, we'll just confirm that, um. That tonight should be, uh, tonight's session would go towards your, uh, requirement. Um, uh, with regard to, um, having, uh, I think it's four hours is the requirement, correct?
Yeah, I think so. I think it was four.
Right.
It's not, it's not an onerous requirement, but nonetheless, um. Uh, you know, we, we just want to double check and make sure that this orientation does in fact comply. Again, as Nick said, uh, um, the rule has. Um, it didn't exist until a few years ago and it's kind, and they've kind of keep tweaking the language on it. So we just want to make sure this, this works. We'll verify that for you and we'll, Matt will get an email, uh, to Tammy to confirm.
So if we're a little bit off the mark, we could come back into session and you could give us the extra half hour of training or whatever, right?
That's fine.
Alright, good.
Uh, but I think, uh, you know, it's, i- i- you have a, uh, I think it's a four, I think you have four years, right, to do the training?
Yep.
So, you know, it's, it's a long period of time to get it done. Um, and, and, and quite frankly, because also because of this new statutory requirement for training, we are going to also do. Our orientation session a little bit more often than we've done in the past.
Well, thank you for coming and, and, um, engaging in the training session. That was very helpful. Enlightening.
Um, so we had a request to, um, send off the, uh, the two decisions, which was the Verillo and E and F associates. I wrote, actually I went onto my email and I saw the last time I would send you an episode, it was back in twenty sixteen. Um, right after it came out, so it's, it's been a while since we sent it to anybody in the city. I'll, uh. We'll, we'll, we'll get that, we'll get an email off to you with just a brief summary of each case and the, uh, full cases behind. I wouldn't spend a lot of time. Unless you really are interested in reading them, um, but we'll, we'll provide you also just a very brief summary of each.
Love summaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Nicholas. Thank you.
Um.
Uh, board members, I, I don't think we have.
You're welcome. Good night, everyone.
Andy, you're the best. Andy, you're the best. You and Tim, you're the best. You and Lee, thank you.
We're, um, we're gonna call it a night.
So motion to adjourn.
I second. Take care.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Everybody, thank you for coming.
Tammy, one note, I will not be attending the February meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Better be down in, uh, where is it? Charlotte? I forgot where you go.
I'm gonna be in Asheville, North Carolina.
Asheville.
Nice, nicely.
I've got a conference there.
Hold it down, Lee, hold it down.
I, I wouldn't do anything that you wouldn't do.
Hey, Lee, is, I'm not, when I first met you, Lee, I had no gray hairs, Lee. Look at this now.
This, this.
Here for the city, it's been twenty years, Lee, look at this now, Lee, look at this.
Hey, I had a full head of hair when I started volunteering.
Oh, right.
Andy, Andy, when I first met Lee, I was younger. It was twenty years I started volunteering, planning and zoning. And Lee's the architect, he's like, alright, I'm gonna tree the ropes and I got gray hairs because of you, Lee.
Hey, sorry, come to the position.
Uh, Tammy.
Yeah.
Talk to the folks, bring up, um, Steve. And see where we are with that because we seemingly got lost and nobody's talking about it. Now, I want to make that move ahead.
For appointing our other.
Um, regular member versus older.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, thanks.
Hey, guys.
Have a good night.
Soon in March.
Be, be well.
I will.
I'll try.